Good afternoon. I officially call this meeting in order. I'm John McCardle. I'm the mayor of Independence. And Cease and I thought this would be a good activity for both our cities to take advantage of the Council of Governments for new elected officials training. And we're excited that the new elected officials, some are here in the room and some are with us virtually. And then continuing council members from both cities are on. So I just want to thank everybody for being here. This is an opportunity for our new counselors to learn the ways that they can help move their community forward. Some of the technical kinds of things and the ways of working with staff, with the state rules, with our local charters and doing all the things that are necessary. Just to let everybody know that this meeting is being recorded so folks can look at it in the future. And that others in the community, if they ever want to know about some of the things that a city counselor does and the rules that they have to work with will have that opportunity. So with that, on behalf of Cease, Mayor Coontz and myself, welcome to the new council members, both from Independence and Monmouth. And I'm going to have our city recorder do the official roll call so we know who's on the line and who's with us today. And then we'll move into our speaker. So with that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the City of Independence. Mayor John McCardle.
Yo.
Counselor Kathy Martin Willis.
Here.
Counselor-elect Sarah Jobe. Counselor-elect Don Roden. Thank you. And now city recorder Phyllis Monmouth from Phyllis Bowman from Monmouth.
Mayor Cease Coons.
Here.
Counselor John Carey.
Yo, John.
Yeah. Figuring out the technology.
Counselor-elect Carol McKeel. Counselor-elect Carol Mc.
Here.
Counselor-elect John Oberst.
Here.
Counselor-elect Rebecca Salina Oliveras.
Here.
So Mayor Coontz, would you like to give a welcome?
Thanks, Phil. I, Mayor McCardle, as usual, spoke eloquently for me. I do look forward to continuing our work together. We've really been able to create a much stronger partnership and welcome our two new counselors in Independence. And the two new counselors in Monmouth, we don't get to count one of our new counselors since he knows more about this than than we do, having served as mayor for 10 years of Monmouth, so.
I'm still a new counselor, Cease.
That's true. He's never been a counselor before. So I'm really excited to work with all of us as a new team to continue to move our community forward. So thank you. And Bill, I look forward to the presentation.
Thank you very much, Mayor. So my name is Bill Monahan. I'm the general counsel for the Mid Willamette Valley Council of Governments. About two and a half years ago, Sean O'Day, who was the executive director at that time, asked me to come on board to assist the COG as it provides services to its various members. One of the tasks that we do is we provide training to newly elected officials, planning commissions, et cetera. And actually, in my years as being an attorney, city manager, city planning director, providing training is really the most rewarding experience that that one can have in local government, I believe. So I'm happy to be here today. My background, as I just mentioned, is that I've been in the planning field and the government field in Oregon for in excess of 30 years. I've been with the COG the last couple of years. I represent a number of cities as their contract city attorney at this time. So today and on Saturday, we'll be talking quite a bit about process. We'll be talking about some of the important things that city council members should know as they begin the adventure of taking on the added responsibility of representing the citizens of their communities. One of the things that I like to stress throughout the presentation is not only is it a concern about process, legal rights and responsibilities, but also I believe the most inherent issue for us all today is to maintain the trust with our community members. So much of what you'll hear from me today will be about best practices. What I've observed in my years of being at many, many city council meetings where I've observed that there are times that the community members feel welcome, where they feel that they can give their input, where they feel that they have been listened to, and when they feel that they have been respected. And I think those are the most important things for local government officials to keep in mind as you conduct your public meetings, that it's so important to maintain the public trust because if we expect to have people come forward out of their homes and give presentations at city council meetings to give input into local projects and ultimately to provide their funding and support for city measures and facilities, it's always important that we maintain that trust and not lose it. And as all of the members of city council and mayors who have served their communities already recognize, once you lose trust, rebuilding it is an incredibly difficult thing. So I'll try to touch on some of those things today. And as you know, on Saturday, we'll be going into more of the process oriented things, the Oregon land use system and how we handle land use hearings. But today we'll start with some of the the general topics, some of the foundation questions of why do we have authority to do the things that we do as cities? And some of the most important elements of conducting local government meetings, maintaining records, the ethics issues, and some of the things that are important to city council members, namely your own liability as a person stepping up to fulfill the role as a city council member. So I know we don't have a whole lot of time. We're going to go through this relatively quickly today. This could be a much longer session. If you need to take a break, please feel free to do so. I will probably just go directly until four o'clock. I've got two council members here and a mayor who may raise their hands and ask me questions. There may be folks who have questions from remotely. Please, you raise your hand. We'll try to acknowledge you and make sure we get your questions answered. I don't know about you, but working in this Zoom environment is incredibly difficult for me. I act as city attorney for a number of cities. I find that the meetings are difficult to do. It doesn't really encourage community engagement. So some of the things that I talk about today are really oriented towards the meetings that I've been used to when people are actually physically in the room. But but there's an added element when it becomes a Zoom meeting, for instance, acknowledging someone who is a member of the community who wants to be able to raise a question. And also the the physical element of how do you know something is going well or the community doesn't understand an issue? We don't have the ability in Zoom meetings to have the body language to be able to see someone's eyes, to see whether we're getting things across to them. So I would appreciate any input that you have. And if something is not coming across clear because I'm going too fast or I'm jumping over something, please find a way to indicate your interest in clarification and we'll try to get to that. So here we go. Here's the agenda. We're going to talk about these topics. These are some topics that Sean O'Day and I have reviewed the last couple of years. So I have to acknowledge for Sean appreciation for the colorful slides that have graphics. Those are Sean's, maybe with a little bit of editing. The ones that are very boring that are just words, those are mine. He's much more tech savvy than I am. I also need to make the disclosure that all attorneys need to do that while I am a lawyer and I'm a lawyer for the Council of Governments, I'm not your lawyer and I know you have very competent legal representation. I can tell that from the rules that I've seen that your communities have and some other things that I've observed on your webpages. You have very good representation. You have a really strong foundation. So for the council, for the new council members, I should point out, one of the things that you probably have already received from your city managers is information about certain things such as the charter, the city code, information about some of the most important plans, the comprehensive plan, the transportation system plan, public facilities plans, other things such as that. They probably don't want to overwhelm you by giving you all of those in a, you know, paper form as we used to do. Instead, they'll give you links onto the to the web for where you can obtain those. I suggest to you that if you have the opportunity, go through them and try to get some general familiarity as to what has what within it. But you might want to wait until you get to a specific element on a council agenda that's coming up, that you know is coming in the future, that you then put your time into the the real hard work of getting to understand those documents. But some of the things we're going to talk about today is the importance of some of the the language, how it's formed, and why it's important to your community. So this is structure. We're going to talk about these topics today and we'll move right into it. The government structure in Oregon, as you know, the structure is states, counties, cities and special districts. All of the communities in the state are considered cities. There are some places such as Hamlets and others that are not really official governmental units. But the city, the state rather is made up of 36 counties, all the cities that are pointed out, and then special purpose districts. You probably already have a relationship with several special purpose districts. Some of us obtain our services from fire districts, water districts, sewer districts, school districts, of course. And as the note says, there are roughly 35 different types. They're covered by different statutory authority than cities. The comparison is what the state does. The state provides all the services that are referenced and are primarily responsible for things such as secondary, primary and secondary education, environmental protection, primary sources of income that state has, income tax. As we all know, there's no sales tax in Oregon. And our legislators are volunteers, stoked and positioned. Counties, they serve as the agents for the state, oftentimes carrying out some of the state responsibilities such as human services. They serve both their unincorporated and incorporated residents. And the elected county commissioners are paid positions and the sources of funding are listed. They have more things than than the state. They do fees and charges, for instance. Special districts, typically they have either one level of authority or a combined combined authority such as sewer and water are commonly put together. They overlap other jurisdictions. Our citizens, when they see their tax bills, will see that they not only are charged for their city services, but also those specials districts that overlap the city. The governing body may be a separate authority, or it may be the same as for another jurisdiction. County boards of commissioners sometimes are also the commissioners of a parks authority, for instance. And their sources of funding depends on the services that are provided. But mostly they're based on user fees and charges to the services they provide. So let's get to cities. Cities have the opportunity to provide the widest range of services, but it's all defined by what the local citizens will authorize a city to do. And here's the list. I'm not sure exactly what Monmouth and Independence have, but obviously you have the majority of these. Those are what provide you with the opportunity to receive state shared revenues. But cities have have a laundry list of the services that they provide. Cities are commonly seen as being the most accessible government, most accessible level of government to to citizens. That's a fact. I remember long ago reading a book about Lyndon Baines Johnson, who was often asked, what did he find is the most difficult position that he observed in his years of public service? And he said it was a planning commissioner in East Texas. And I think that's because of the accessibility that a planning commissioner or a city council member has to local citizens. They can reach you. They can find where you live. They can access you at the local grocery store, ask you questions, and most importantly, be able to come to city council meetings and participate. Elected officials within the state of Oregon, primarily unpaid positions. There's a couple of exceptions. Beaverton and Portland. Beaverton's is changing right now. I think there's still going to be a salary for the mayor, but not at the same level as it was. And the primary sources of revenue are listed, property taxes, franchise tax fees that come from such things as telecommunication or from electrical or from telephone service, et cetera. State shared revenues, fees for services that are generated by your your local departments and other taxes that you might impose. But cities have broad home rule authority, and that's a very significant word. So let's get to that. Local government individual authority. Local government is not referenced within the U.S. Constitution. The U.S. Constitution refers to the rights and responsibilities of states. Cities are a subdivision of the state and given their authority through acts of the state. Home rule authority is available to every city in the state of Oregon. In the 19, early 1900s, there was a change of interpretation as to what was required for a city to have authority to do things. But primarily, local governments have the rights and powers to regulate activities for the protection of the public health, the safety, morals and welfare, have the right to license, have the right to tax and the right to incur debt for public purposes. And they do not require express legislative authority to do so. And that's because Article 11, Section 2 of the Oregon Constitution says so. There was a change to the Constitution that says, "The legislative assembly shall not enact, amend or repeal any charter or act of incorporation for any municipality in the state of Oregon." Only the voters of the city are granted power to enact and amend the municipal charter. That's important to know because you both have very sophisticated home rule charters that are based primarily on the model charter that the League of Oregon Cities recommends, but also it has some, your charters have specific language about some of the things you are concerned about. Some charters, for instance, will identify the when the city council needs to meet. They'll always specify how ordinances are adopted. They'll, they may have some special language about your city councils. I know in your cases, one of the cities has elected positions where you have someone declare, I want to run for position one, two or three, and you have specific election for for that position. While the other community groups everyone, it's the top vote getters from all who apply to be a member of the city council. That's determined by your by your charter. And your charter is adopted by the community and can only be modified by a vote of the community. So city has all the powers the constitutions, statutes and common law of the United States and Oregon expressly or impliedly grant. And whatever you as a city through your charter specifically identify or enumerate as your powers. Now, before I go to state preemption, I should say, a charter can be a document that is adopted at the incorporation of a city and never changed again. Or it can be one that a city is routinely reviewing it to see whether it still works and whether there's some language that needs to be added. Sometimes charter review is initiated by citizens who say, this particular element of the charter doesn't work for us. We want to change it. The city council has to make the determination whether to bring a charter amendment process before the citizens, before the voters, for them to take action. I encourage you to take a look at your charter to make sure you're still comfortable with it and perhaps not, not every year, but periodically, take a look at it and see whether or not there's anything that the city needs to clarify to make sure that its operation can be done properly. There are still some state preemptions. While the the state does not tell a city what it needs to do in terms of what services it provides or how it how it functions, but there are some things that the state preempts and it has to be expressed preemption. For instance, the state law says that criminal laws, cities cannot allow something that is identified as a crime by the state where the state prohibits something, and they can't prohibit something that the state allows. For instance, when marijuana was legalized several years ago, the the requirement is local governments don't have the ability to say, well, we want marijuana to be illegal again and criminalize it within our community. You have the right to decide whether or not you want to have sales of marijuana within your community. That was decided a while ago. But you don't have the right to create a criminal criminal law that applies to possession of marijuana. Civil laws, city has the right to identify what civil laws it wants to put in place. Legislature cannot control those. And as I said, it has to be expressed preemption. What that means is the city has the authority to do something that's legal unless the state specifically says you can't do it. And there have been some cases in the last few years, I think there was one down in Phoenix in 2018, where it was determined that the city of Phoenix was able to apply its franchise fee, not franchise fee, it's right away on us, against a sewer authority, even though the sewer authority claimed that the state didn't allow local governments to do so. The League of Oregon Cities assisted, the city of Phoenix and other cities jumped in. And the the court determined that without an express preemption, the local authority exists. Let's see. We'll move on to, there are some express preemptions, tobacco tax, tobacco machines, video lottery. The city can't have its own video lottery terminals, for instance. Some implied preemptions are when the state of Oregon establishes laws that it says are going to apply to every city, local government in the community. Those are some we're going to talk about today, the public records law, public meetings law and the PERS program. We're not going to talk about PERS. We're going to talk about the other two. So authority of local government, there is no inherent authority. All of our authority comes from the state. State by passing Article 11, the Constitution has established that, and by the way, that was passed by the voters of the state of Oregon. The that authority allows the city to create its own laws. The council acts as a body subject to the city charter. Why is this important? Because no one member of a city council can act on behalf of the city to create a law or to take actions that obligate the the community without the authority of the charter or without the authority of the council. So the charter will say, for instance, the mayor has these responsibilities. And under certain forms of government, the mayor has more authority than on others. In both of your communities, I note that the mayor is a member of council, but only votes when there is a tie. I've seen many other charters where the mayor not only is a voting member, but also has the ability to make a motion. I see in your charters, I think one, in one charter, you have, the mayor has a right to veto an ordinance. And the other is expressed that the mayor doesn't have the right to veto an ordinance. In most of the communities I've worked with, the mayor doesn't have authority to veto an action of the city council. But most important to you as newly members, newly elected members of the city council is your power rests in being a member of the city council. And your power is the power that the council as a group votes. You cannot act outside of that authority. So unless the city council takes an action, you can't take a contrary action. You have to follow the the laws of the majority. So unless granted by the charter or delegated by majority, no individual council member has authority to act. And delegation by the council should be done officially by the city council. They, for instance, might say to a council member, you are delegated to be our representative to work with the fire district, to work on a policy that applies to X. And please come back to us. You have authority to take it almost to the final level, but if it's going to be something that we apply to our citizens, bring back that recommendation and we as a council will vote and will will make the final decision. By the way, if you act outside of the authority, you act as an individual, that's what's called ultra vires. You're back, you've, you're outside of the walls. When you do that, when we get to the last part of this presentation, when you do that and you step out of the authority given to you by the charter or by the council, you're on your own, which means you are not under the coverage of the liability coverage that the city has for you as a local government official. If the action that you take is something that obligates the city to a contract or does something that turns out to be illegal and there's a charge filed against you or a claim filed against you, the city will not protect you. You're on your own. So that's your incentive, other than your community awareness and your intent to act as a good city council member, you need to be thinking about protecting your own resources. So what I like to do before we get into the specifics of some of the statutory responsibilities is talk about some of the challenges of local government today. And this is where we get into some of the, how do we continue to maintain the trust in the community discussion? So it's very important for everyone who's involved in local government to understand the roles of the city council. These are the things city council members are involved in. And by the way, when you become a city council member, that as soon as you get sworn in at that first meeting, you of course have the same voting rights, the same qual, same value of your vote as any other member of the city council. And there's an expectation that you are up to speed and ready to act. Now, I've seen city council members who have been appointed because there's been a vacancy. And they've been appointed on the night of a council meeting and then seated as a council member and given the agenda, which they probably haven't had a chance to look at fully because they were just coming for an interview an hour before. And now they're a fully full-fledged member of council. I actually worked for a city where this was done with the mayor and a mayor was appointed, she was sworn in, and then she was handed the gavel to run the meeting. Now, needless to say, we're not putting you in that position. That's why we're providing the training. But when someone is in that position as council member, they might be given an agenda that has an award of a contract. There might be a complex land use hearing that's coming before the council on appeal. There might be a decision made on a personnel matter. There may be a number of issues that require your involvement. But the your role, as I said, is the same as anyone who's been on the council for a number of years. The roles that you have, policymaking, that's when you're making laws, passing particular plans that are going to apply to the community. Conducting the council meetings, primarily that's the mayor, but it could be the council president in the in the absence of the of the mayor. And it could be a situation that neither is available for the meeting, but there's still a quorum and there's a reason to meet. And someone may need to be designated by those members of the council who are there to act as the person conducting the meeting. So the mayor is very fortunate in most communities. They're given a script that will list each and every item in the order that they're coming. It might even have sample motions, might even have some suggested statements to conclude a a discussion. If you all don't have a copy of that, but you're pressed into duty, make sure you get it from the city recorder, from the city manager so that you can maintain the same level of quality of meetings as the mayor does. Another role of the city council is to select the city manager, the city administrator, and there may be other hiring authority that's under the charter. Typically, a charter will say that the city council appoints a municipal court judge, the city attorney. In some communities, there's more responsibility than that, but that's identified by the charter. And the charter will identify the only positions that you have authority for. It also, a city counselor provides general direction to those people who are hired. So if you hire your city manager, you're giving general direction of what the community's goals are, what your expectations are, and you'll set the goals for the city manager. But the day-to-day operation of the community typically rests with the city manager or the city recorder in some communities. I've seen one community that's charter is Lucy written and it's been interpreted that in that situation, the city council members make the choices of department heads, but that's very rare. And then there are other responsibilities that a city council may have. You as a governing body might determine that there's liaison responsibilities to departments or liaison responsibilities to intergovernmental organizations. Or you might be delegated some other responsibilities. But as I said before, form of the local government is determined by the charter. And under the council manager form, and one of your, one of your charters says that it's a, I think, a council mayor form of government or mayor council. But if you have a city manager, it pretty much operates the same as a council manager form. In that case, the council acts as a body to make decisions. And the council members as individuals don't have authority to make decisions. The implementation is goes on to the manager and the director, the department directors and other staff that are employed. As I mentioned before, council makes decisions together, acting as a legislative body. The council adopt adopts laws, which are called ordinances, and also adopts a budget. You engage in policymaking when you're You engage in policymaking when you're undertaking such things as visioning or creating plans for the community. Or when you take actions such as modifying the comprehensive plan. And as I mentioned, you act as a hiring authority for certain positions. And when you have a hiring authority, you also have the authority to give direction. To conduct the performance reviews and if necessary to discipline or remove an official. And obviously, you'd follow the process that's identified within any contract or any personnel procedures that you have in place. Decision making process is a few types. You act primarily as a legislative and administrative or quasi judicial body. The legislative body is one that is making decisions that are laws for the community. When you're making a law for the community, the expectation is that you're getting input from the entire community. From whatever source of information you might need to be able to form your own opinion to vote. And when the body makes a decision, there's deference given to that decision, and what's meant by deference is. Your interpretation of what that means. Is based on your legislative history of how you've gone about creating law. And if that's challenged, a court will provide deference to the community. If the city council has made the decision and then has followed. The process that is establishes as it implements that 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 law. Ordinances of the local laws created by councils. And ordinances are specified within your charter as to how you would adopt them. Typically, there'll be in in enabling, some enabling language that has to be stated on an ordinance. That says the city of independence ordains as follows, something like that, and then the ordinance follows. And there'll be a process to how it's adopted, and typically it's done in two or three meetings. And it may or may not be possible to have both readings on the same night. Administrative decisions are those where you're taking some action to carry out a previously established law. And this is when we usually are using a resolution or a motion. So in those cases, you'll be giving direction to staff. You'll be taking an action for some kind of an expenditure or for some kind of other action. That is following the authority that you've already created by ordinance. But in in the application of these resolutions or motions, you don't have as much deference if there's a challenge. So there's less deference, there's usually less formality. And the final way that you act is as quasi judicial, and in the quasi judicial function. You have to follow what's called due process, there's a responsibility that you follow a very strict process. In the actions that you take to carry out your decision. And primarily a quasi judicial decision is one that's made with in a land use setting. It may be when you are awarding a contract. Or well, not when you're awarding a contract as much as when you're addressing a challenge to a contractor word. But the courts will strictly review a decision that you make. When you are sitting as a quasi judicial body. To make sure that you followed each and every one of the elements. And we're going to go through quasi judicial on Saturday, because again, land use. Is the most prevalent form of quasi judicial action that a city council makes at the local level. And when this quasi judicial, there's several key elements that we'll go through that you as individuals. Need to monitor your own activities and behavior and make certain declarations. To protect not only yourself, but also the integrity of the process, and we'll go through those in detail. Making decisions and meeting procedures. Some councils use parliamentary procedures that they establish themselves to carry out meetings and make decisions. I think it was the city of Monmouths that I had a chance to look at the council rules. I really like them a lot because some communities will say, we'll have some council rules, but. If we don't have a council rule, we'll defer to Robert's rules of parliamentary procedure. And Robert's rules parliamentary procedure are very difficult to understand. What the Monmouth rules do is they take out of Robert's rules exactly. Those elements that they want to have applied, and it's a it's a very clear roadmap to how decisions are going to be made. There's no statutory procedures from the state of Oregon as to how to conduct city business. As I said, some cities adopt Robert's rules, that's dangerous if that's all that you do, some draft their own procedural rules. Whatever rules that I use though, need to be known to you as new council members, so that when you step in. You're not in that awkward position of always feeling like, well, everybody else knows what's going on. But I don't understand this at all, I'm in a, I'm in a real disadvantage. So if there's one thing to take a look at other than the charter before starting your position. Please ask or receive a copy of the the rules and ask clarification if you need it from either. A present member of the city council or a former member of the city manager or city recorder. Also, the citizens should have access to these rules, and I know that they are, because when I went online, I I I saw the the rules. It's important for them to know that when they come to a city meeting, how the meeting is going to be conducted. Because your first meeting that you went to, you were probably intimidated by the setting. By the formality, not knowing what to do, and the council rules can give you a clear roadmap of what your the expectations are. They might tell you that when a particular element, what those types of. Decisions, when those are going to be coming forward on the agenda, they might tell you the limitations that you have on the amount of time you have to make a presentation. They might tell you that the council will always make a decision that night, or when the council might take public testimony, might not. Council rules typically state the guidelines that are followed locally. Here's what those rules and guidelines can contain. They might tell you when the regular meetings will be held, the time, date and location. They may state the order and the format of the agenda. You may or may not have public comments at the beginning of the meeting, you may have them at the end of the meeting, different cities do it in different ways. They might identify the person responsible for the agenda formation. Typically, that's the city manager, but in many jurisdictions, it's a cooperative effort between the city manager and the mayor to set the agenda. And this is important because there are many times where there is a. Member of council or member of the community that steps forward and says, I think the council should be talking about this issue. And if it's just left that, okay, the council will talk about that issue, council says, yeah, we'll add that to the agenda. Well, what agenda, how quickly can I expect it to be on? What work will be done to make sure that when it does come to the council's attention? There'd be enough information for the council to make a knowledgeable decision and decide whether or not to have public input. It also might state the decorum and participation obligations of the public as well as of the council members. Some rules are very strict, they'll say, we're going to have everyone have the opportunity on the council to speak before someone can can speak a second time. Sometimes it will talk about the order of how people will vote. The position one always votes first, position two, sometimes we'll say it's on a rotational basis, which is much more fair. Than having the person number one always vote first, but those things can be stated in council rules and guidelines. They also might state the penalties for disrupting a meeting, which is unfortunately becoming more and more of a concern in the United States. Any locally established Russo should be routinely reviewed and updated. And I've seen some communities always put it on the first meeting in January. I've always found that to be extremely difficult for a new member of council to be expected to come in. And be given the opportunity that one time per year to talk about what changes they want to have seen made in the council's rules, when they haven't participated in those rules. So if you do have it on a scheduled. Uh timeline, my recommendation is to always do it. Say in July or August, after a new member of council has the opportunity to get their feet wet. And understand what works and what doesn't work and where they think there should be clarification. It's the forms of council actions, we talked about that a little bit, ordinances. The way that an ordinance is typically presented is it is prepared in advance. It generally is available to the public at least seven days before it's. Before it's in front of the city council. It has a clause that will say it's effective thirty days after passage unless there's an emergency. Now I've seen city, some city councils use the emergency situation almost as a routine thing, but that's not the appropriate way. When an witness is going to be adopted adopted and there's an emergency, the ordinance should state what the emergency is. Then there's resolutions, they're usually prepared in advance. Typically, a city council and a city manager will have a relationship where they try to avoid any surprises. So everybody on the city council and the staff are all on equal footing and can know what is going to be in front of the council. So that the best effort can be made to make whatever action is anticipated or asked for, make it the best that it can be. But there have been some times where there's a need for a resolution to come immediately, you might get a. Uh request from the school district that says we need a resolution in support of such and such. Because it's going in front of the legislature or something else, and we need it now. It's appropriate under that circumstance for the city council to consider. Whether it in fact wants to adopt such a resolution legally, it can be done. And a resolution can becomes effective immediately. Unless the council chooses to say, we'll pass this resolution, but. State a specific date in the future when it is going to become effective. And then there are motions, which is simply actions, devices taken by a member of the city council to place an issue. Before the council for a vote. And the other form of council action is a consensus where all that's needed is. Can we find out that there's enough interest on the on behalf, on the part of the members of the city council? To move an issue forward, and this might be that you need to put more time and energy into doing some research, maybe even using. Some staff time and to get some professional advice. You might ask, is there enough interest for us to continue to do so, and you get a consensus for council. You may also get a consensus from council that something is. At at the proper stage for a specific act to take, and we'll talk a little bit about some examples of that later. Quorums and voting. A quorum is more than fifty percent of the members of the entire council. So if you have a seven member council, obviously a quorum is at least four people, you need at least four people. To be able to conduct a meeting and to take action. The city charter will typically define a quorum, and I believe both the USA, uh just the bare minimum. In the case of seven, it's four, in case five, it's three. A meeting involving less than a majority of the members of council, however. Doesn't constitute a meeting where a decision may be made, this is important when we get into public meeting law. So if there's less than a quorum, it's not a meeting where a decision can be made. And you have to take. Responsibility for making sure that there are not decisions made in such a setting, it's important. When a meeting has a quorum, it's governed by Oregon's open public meetings law. The only word that can describe the Oregon public meetings law is transparency. The expectation is that you are going to operate. As a council in the view of the public, with the exception of executive session. Votes will typically take a majority of voter council members present, I think that's what both of your charters say. I don't think there's any super majorities, there are some times where there's a s- a particular type of decision. That a charter will say that more than a majority is necessary for us to do something. But for the most part, it's a majority of all the council members present who are legally entitled to vote. And. Have the ability to adopt a motion, resolution or ordinance to take action. Council member may abstain. When a council member abstains, it's important that they state the reason on the record for abstaining. And I think I saw in the rules that I looked at that that's expressly stated. So that it is not a a matter that can be at the discretion of the person making the abstention. It's important for the community to the community to know why. So for instance, when you go to your very first meeting, if there's something that is so. So intense, so uh complex. For instance, it might be acting on a litigation, and if you don't have an executive session before the. Meeting to get a briefing of what's gone on before the litigation, you may not feel that you're prepared to to vote. It would be fair for you to say, I'm not prepared to vote on this item tonight because this is my first meeting. I haven't been given the information to be able to know whether or not I should, which direction I should go in this litigation, so because of that I abstain. That would be perfectly acceptable. Yes, the mayor's role, so the mayor's role may or may not be enhanced or limited by the charter. And as I said earlier, both of your charters say that the mayor only votes in case of a tie. But typically, the mayor has several roles, as a leader of the council. The person who presides at meetings maintains decorum at those meetings. Sometimes the mayor is involved in preparing uh the agendas. Sometimes the mayor is responsible for appointing citizens to committees and boards. And I think your rules both say that the mayor makes the appointments. Subject to approval by the city council. And uh that means the mayor may be the person, the sole person that does the interviews. Of potential board and committee members, or the mayor may say, I want to have one more member of council, or less than the majority, help me with this, will somebody help me with this? The mayor can delegate that responsibility for the first level of review if she or he wants to. The mayor also signs ordinances and resolutions on behalf of the city. And they are typically the primary day to day contact with the manager administrator. This is important to administrators or managers because they need to have someone who is. Totally feeling and understanding what the city manager is experiencing on a day to day basis. Sometimes the city manager is only seen by some members of the council one or two times a month at city council meetings. So it's important that there be at least one person that the manager has more regular contact with. Often the mayor is seen as a a person having more authority than he or she has. And this is because so many of us are mobile, I moved here from Massachusetts. The former government that I had in Massachusetts is totally different than Oregon, and as a result. As someone moving from Massachusetts, I had the expect expectation that if I wanted something done, I go right to the mayor, that's the only person I go to. And of course, in the formal government you have on a day to day issue, the first point of contact might more appropriately be the city manager who can delegate. And get things done by a department director or themselves, but because we know that people. Respect the authority of the mayor, that it's perfectly appropriate for them to see that the mayor has more authority and go to that person. They're also seen as the face of the community and they represent the city at regional events, and obviously they can ask you to fill that role as a. Member of council. The manager administrator role, as I said, they're the executive officer, they're the CEO. Their role is to prepare the budget for the council, they're the they're the local budget officer in most cases. They're responsible for the actions of hiring and supervising employees. And by the way, I just realized, I've just been going on and not noticing if anybody had the hand raised, so if anybody has a hand raised. I haven't been looking and I apologize. But um I think you're all just being nice and letting me roll, okay. The manager has authority over all the employees. Obviously, they have to carry out the personnel rules that are developed in the personnel manuals. As well as any collective bargaining agreements that you have, some communities require that the personnel manual be adopted by the city council. I think it's more appropriate if it's not, if it's adopted within the administration, but it whatever suits the city. They're also the top advisor to the council, providing the council with the best information they can for decision making. They keep the council informed on decisions and hopefully they strive to avoid surprises. And they appreciate it when they don't get surprises. And they're the primary day to day contact with citizens, usually this service is the best way, because if a citizen brings an issue to the city. They want to get results, and the only way that it can be assigned properly and then tracked to see if it actually was done. Is if it gets into the hands of the city manager, who can make a determination as to what the resources are that are available. Within the staffing and otherwise, so that they can get action for the person's request. Is the citizens' role, because the citizens is a very important component of local government, of course. Their primary role is to report the concerns that they have, give input to the council decisions. And I'll say it here and I'll probably say it again, Oregon's open public meeting law. Requires that citizens be able to participate. Oregon's public meeting law does not say that citizens get to speak. Oregon's public meeting law does not say that citizens get to speak at each and every item that comes before the city council. You as a council get to decide that with some limitations. You need to allow the public to speak at, at the, at land use hearings. You need to be able to, you need to give citizens the opportunity to speak on the chief executive officer's position in certain circumstances. We'll get to those later on. But I want to make sure you recognize that participation doesn't mean the ability to always get up and speak on every item. But citizens do have the ability to give input to decisions. And they can do that outside of the council meeting in most cases. In some cases like outside judicial, you need to be careful that that outside contact could be an expat take contact. We'll talk about that with specificity later. They also, citizens participate in city boards and committees. And I know many of you have come up through the ranks of being in, on a board of committee and then decided to take the leap to run for city council. And those are typically the best prepared members of city council because they, they hit, get to hit the ground running with some understanding of what city procedure is and what the expectations might be. They recommend actions by council, they give input on strategic planning and visioning. And most importantly, they provide the financial resources that city needs to operate. And as I mentioned before, if you don't involve the community, if you don't maintain trust when you actually need a specific vote for authorization for a general obligation bond or some other form of funding, you may not have the support of the community. So basically citizens form and express their opinions and they certainly influence the direction of the community. Council managers together, I put this slide here because I think it's very important that there be solid council manager relations. And typically what a community does is there'll be an annual goal setting. There'll be discussion about how well are we doing as a council? How well are we doing as a team of the council and, and manager? What should we be expecting for the future? How can we get there? So it's very important that there be close communication and teamwork. So together they have a key role to conduct those open meetings to make sure that the process is followed accurately within the confines of the state law. And also to maintain that active communication with the community. In the meetings that they work with together, they encourage citizen involvement and participation. And they strive for a balance so that the council and the community is carrying things out effectively, maintaining that trust. Everything is done in the open, conducted with respect. And the things are completed in a way that the public is made aware of the results. Sometimes a community will say, we're going to take such and such action. They tell the community that, and then a few months later, someone from the community comes and says, whatever happened to that action? I've never heard a result. And it may be the city did a wonderful thing. They might have taken care of that action within two days of when they made the promise. But if a community member has to wait three months to hear that something good was done, well, you just lost out on the opportunity for almost three months of positive feeling on, on behalf of that person in the community. And they may in fact have talked to other members of the community and said, that damn city, they never do what they say they're gonna do. I haven't seen anything that was done from my suggestion. So it's very important to report back to the community what you have done, whether it is what the community asked for or not. The relationship between the council and manager, it's important that these elements be adhered to, that there be open communication. It's important that council members have equal access to information. And why that's important is because if a council member is, feels like they're left out, it's very easy to lose that person's respect for either the council, the manager, or the entire team. And when one member of council checks out, that definitely affects the integrity as well as the efficiency and effectiveness of the council. I always like to suggest regular one-on-one meetings if that's desired and if it's possible, it's not always achievable. But I, when I was a city manager, I gave that opportunity to my council members, even if it was only once a month. Just to make sure that we're on the same page. And council members and managers together always have an effort and a desire to work as a team, and that's best maintained by having open communication. They mutually support each other and they develop ways to stay informed and again to avoid surprises. What is it? So the next three things, I'm going to go through them relatively quickly. I hope you'll take a look at these on occasion to see a wee meeting these expectations. Council members typically need quality information to make decisions. Many times they need alternatives. And I've seen some situations in communities where a staff will say, well, there's only one alternative. It's the way that we suggested. Well, council members typically want to know that another side has been looked at and it helps them in a staff report or in a presentation to be given the alternative in a fair and balanced way in order to make decisions. They need complete and concise reports. They need to have sufficient time on city agendas to take action. There are times that a meeting has to run until nine o'clock, 10 o'clock, midnight. Well, in that discussion between the, the manager and the mayor on setting agendas, it's always important to give adequate time so that the council is going to be able to get the input that they expect, review the documentation and to deliberate and make a decision. So it's important to be anticipating, how much time is it going to take for this particular item? Particularly the important ones. They need timely updates on how things are being implemented. They need to know in advance when there are issues that they could hear about at a city council meeting. They need information about emergency situations, particularly because council members have a role in emergencies. It's possible they may need to make an emergency acquisition or take some action. They need to know when there are problems encountered while a project is being implemented. Some city managers have fallen into the problem of taking everything on themselves. They've been given something to implement, they run into a problem, they work the issue, work the issue, work the issue, and they may end up having a roadblock. It might be better to bring in, an issue on implementation to the council earlier to see, oh, by the way, couldn't we get another $10,000 of authorization and take this alternative route? Rather than stay on the direction the council might have earlier given. And they need to note in advance when there's a need to alter course. The manager needs to follow. They need to know when a council member plans to raise a new issue. It's really disruptive to the manager as well as other members of council. When one member of council routinely will bring an issue and say, I think this needs to be talked about tonight. Even though there are other items on the agenda that might have been working their way forward to be considered that night, that can become an issue. Each council member needs to read their agenda packets and raise issues in advance. Oftentimes when a council member reads their agenda packet and has an issue, that's probably an issue that someone else needs some clarification of. So if you contact the staff, the staff might say, oh, we didn't understand that was a problem. Let us get some more information. They'll ship that information out to you and others so that you can be better prepared and the meeting can go more efficiently. Manager also needs council members to inform when they will be absent from meetings. Because it's very, really difficult to schedule the most important critical decisions on a night that not all council members will be there to take part in the decision and take responsibility for the direction set. Regular opening clear direction and feedback to the manager is needed rather than that to all come out at the annual performance review and not to understand that there are corrective actions or different issues to be resolved earlier on during the year. Managers also need flexibility to carry out their tasks. They need discretion to use their professional judgment and no interference and personnel rules. I'll emphasize that again, no interference and personnel issues. Because in a community such as yours where population is within the 10 to 20,000 range, you probably know a lot of members of the staff, a lot of members in the who have members of their fam, a lot, a lot of community members who have members of the family who work for the city. You just can't get involved in those issues. You need to leave it to the manager. And then I added this slide a couple of years ago. I used to do, I've been doing this training for quite some time with different elements. Preserving safety, it's really important to make sure that the setting that you have your council meetings in, the settings that you have your employees work in are in fact secure. So it's important that you develop plans to deal with any situations that could develop. A city that I worked in, we decided that with all the active shooting issues that were happening in the country, it was important that we have some training for the city councils for what happens if it happens to us. And that involved understanding the layout of the room, how emergency personnel could get in, how council members could get out, how the public could get out. We even went to the point of putting old Kevlar vests inside of the council seating area. They, they sat behind a, a desk type situation. We put the Kevlar vest so we'd be protecting the council members. If you have those resource, just things to think about. It's important to identify what threats might come your way, train your council staff together so that if the worst thing happens, you're ready. Okay, with that, we're going to go to a topic that's important to all of us as public officials, that's ethics. This is chapter 244 of Oregon's revised statutes. The statutes, there, there are a number of different statutes that apply. These are the ones that are, that are listed here. Obviously, these are identified as things to be concerned about. Receiving bribes, misusing public funds, coercion, et cetera. We're not going to have any of that happen. We may have an issue with open public meetings law. We'll talk about that later on. But primarily when we talk about ethics, we're talking about ORS chapter 244 that says when you serve as a public official, it's a public trust. And as a result, you should put loyalty to the highest ethical standards above loyalty to government persons, political party, or private enterprise. What does that mean? Oregon's Ethics Commission administers the ethics rules. We're going to talk about some of the critical elements of that. We're going to talk about use of office. We're going to talk about conflicts of interest. Solicitation, acceptance of gifts. We're not going to talk about a few of the other ones like solicitation of honoraria. Those don't come in very often. And then reporting of economic interests. The, the four that I identified are the ones we're going to talk about, the most important to you. A public official in state of Oregon is any person who is serving the state of Oregon or one of its political subdivisions, a city or a special district as an elected official, an appointed official, an employee, agent, or otherwise irrespective of whether they're compensated for the services. This includes volunteers. You are a volunteer to some extent, but most important, you're an elected official. So ORS 244 applies to you. Public officials may not use or attempt to use their position to obtain a financial benefit or avoid a loss of financial benefit. But, well, let's go back to the, I'll stick to the slide. Avoid, obtain a financial benefit that the opportunity for that benefit would not be available to you but for the position held by the public official. What that means is if something is only an opportunity for you because you're the member of the city council, that's not something generally available to the public. You can't take advantage of it if it's going to financially benefit you. Or in reverse, if it avoids financial detriment to you. So this is under ORS 244040. I'll say it now, I might say it again later. If your council has not had the opportunity to have training from the Oregon Ethics Commission staff, they're readily available, they're close by, they're more than willing to come out at one of your study sessions or a special meeting and give you a one-hour presentation to bring you all up to speed so that you're all on the same playing field as to what the rules of the Ethics Commission are. It's important because you as individuals have responsibility for your own behavior and you as individuals have potential liability. So here are some exceptions. You can receive official compensation if it's allowed by the city, if the city passes a a, a resolution that says city council members are going to be paid certain compensation. You can also receive some form of honorarium, we won't go into that in detail. You can get reimbursement of the expenses that you incur on behalf of the city as long as they're allowable expenses. You can also receive an award for professional achievement. You can receive gifts if your local government allows gifts. I've worked with some communities where they say absolutely no gifts are accepted of any kind, of any value. And that might apply to staff as well as elected officials. Hopefully it does, it's going to apply. And another exception is contributions made to a legal expense trust fund. We may get a chance to talk about that, but that's a rarity. Conflicts of interest are a critical element for you to be concerned about under the Oregon Ethics Rules. You must declare when you have a financial conflict of interest. The most important conflict of interest is one that's an actual conflict. Here's the definition. And it says you must declare and must not participate in a decision, an action, or a recommendation. So in any way that would result in financial gain or detriment. Would means you know it is going to happen. So for instance, your spouse has a landscape business. Your spouse wants to apply for the landscape contract that the city has and does so. And now there's going to be consideration of your spouse's proposal compared to other proposals. You can't take part in that in any way because you would benefit financially from your spouse being awarded that contract. You also need to be concerned about whether it would result in a financial gain to you, your relative, a member of your household, or a business with which you're associated with. And we'll go through those definitions. It's very broad. It's going to scare you if you haven't seen it before. But it should scare you because it's so important to follow these rules and not get yourself into a situation where you're brought up on charges. We'll talk about how that works. The other type of, of conflict of interest is a potential conflict of interest. And that's when you have to make a declaration. Now see, this is limited to just a declaration, not a declaration and fair to act. You need to declare, but you have to at least do that. You have to declare that there may be a conflict of interest. If there's a may, and that's, that's a factual question, if it's only may, you can, if you wish, participate in the decision, the action or the recommendation that could result in financial gain and detriment. This is typical that there's going to be a land use action. Maybe the land use action is a half a mile down the road from your property. Your property is somewhat like that property and there's something that's going to be approved for that property. You might say to yourself, well, if the city council approves it for that property, who knows, maybe 15 years from now, development trends will happen and maybe my property could get the same use and maybe I'd benefit. But it's kind of remote. I've got a single family residence here. There's no more development on my property possible. There might be a may. It's a factual issue that, that it may be an actual, depending on the fact. But same group of people are affected. If it could result in financial gain to you, your relative, member of household or business. So you need to be thinking about, is an action that you're going to have potentially affect one of those individuals? Your brother or sister may live in the community. They may run a business. They may look for a land use action. You need to be thinking about whether it impacts them. Because if it impacts them, they may be covered by this statute. Who's a relative? Now, the list of people who are considered public officials and who are relatives, who are relatives of a public official has changed. I think it was about 10 or 12 years ago, that list was expanded. It used to just be son, daughter, mother, father, spouse. Now it includes any children or spouses' children. Could be before, you might have married someone who already had children from a prior relationship or marriage. Those people before were not considered relatives. Now they are. It also now identifies siblings, spouses of siblings, parents are spouses' parents. And then they added this one, any person for whom the public official has a legal support obligation. You may have that support obligation for any of a number of reasons, but if it's a legal responsibility that you're paying or you're paying that person's so, some, some financial assistance, or if they're covered under your health insurance policy, for instance, they may be someone who is a relative and you might not have considered that before. Or any individual for whom you provide benefits. Or the candidate receives benefits. Why it says candidate is you're covered now. You're a candidate for local office. And theoretically, you're known to some members of the community as someone who may be helpful to them once you're on the city council. So if you're approached by someone who's looking for you to make a commitment on something and there might be a financial and there might be a financial entitlement to you, you can't take it now either. Not that I would expect that any of you would. We want to make sure that's part of this law. And now it also says members of the household. That means anyone who resides with you at the time that you are taking an action. Anyone who resides in a household is a relative in the sense under the statute. There's also a provision about businesses. And I won't go through this in detail, but if you are involved in a business, if you have one of these financial relationships to a business, you may not be able to take action on something that comes before the city council. So make sure you're aware of that. What is a business though? It's a corporation, partnership firm, self-employed individual, anything that is for economic gain. But there's an exception. It doesn't include any income-producing, not-for-profit corporation that's taxes exempt. So for instance, if you're on board of directors of a nonprofit and that nonprofit comes in front of the city and tries to get a contract with the city or wants the city to assist them in some way. If you're only a member of the board or a supporter of that organization, you would not have a conflict. If you're an employee of that organization, that's a different matter. What do you have to do? Elected officials, whether actual potential, have to make a public declaration. Whether it's actual potential, we're going to go through this in detail on Saturday. So because it's part of the due process for land use here. But you have to publicly declare the conflict prior to any action that you might take. And my recommendation is the earliest that you know, at a public meeting, get it out there, say it. And then you have to also explain the nature. And that might mean I own property at such and such location and that may affect my, my value. Again, you can't abstain without first declaring or explaining. And the most important element other than the declaration is your declaration needs to be recorded in the official minutes. So you're going to rely on your city recorder to understand you that you're making a declaration, whether it's potential, actual, and get it in the record. When you review those minutes, if that's your common practice, that they come before the council at the next meeting, make sure that's in there before you vote to approve the minutes. Some exceptions, there's a class exception. If the financial impact of the action that the council is going to take is going to impact everyone in the community to the same degree, you're, you're a member of a class, not a problem. There may also be smaller classes. Maybe the class is any individual in the community who does not have a, a connection to a city sewer. Let's say there are three hundred houses that are on septic and now the city is going to create a new program that the city is going to provide some financial benefit to connect all those people to sewer. And before it was, everyone had to do it individually and it was a high cost, but the city's going to subsidize it. If you're one of those smaller class, three hundred people, whatever number I use, that may or may not be a class. In that case, what you need to do is ask the Oregon Ethics Commission whether or not that qualifies as a class before you decide to use a class exception. Yes?
Wouldn't example of that be if like I have children and we're voting on a issue that would like bring recreation to our community? Would I, would my children be a part of that class so I could still participate in it or?
So that's a great question. So the question is, would everybody be able to hear the question or should I repeat it?
Uh, they should have been able.
Okay, so thanks. Oh, same thumbs up, thank you. So in that case, unless it was a specific to a recreation facility or a playground really close to your house that only impacts a small number of people and the rest of the community's been waiting for recreation, but they're not seeing their needs met. If it's community-wide, that would be a classic section. But if it is localized and only affects a few, then you need to be concerned about that. And I've already talked about charitable organization. Thanks for the question. I always, there's the ice break question. Yes. As I said, your community may say no gifts. But the Oregon Ethics Rules say that it is acceptable for a public official to receive gifts. But there's some limitations. The limitations are that the gifts in a year, a calendar year, cannot exceed a total value of fifty dollars from any single source. And that single source means, for instance, uh, let's say it's a local hardware store that sells, sells materials to the city. When it sells materials to the city, it has an administrative interest because the city has contracts and they make money. That's an administrative issue. So that hardware store really shouldn't be giving you as a recognized member of the city council gifts over the course of the year, that when you add them all together, that's what aggregate means. When you add them all together, they don't exceed fifty dollars in value. It's your responsibility to maintain a record of what you've been given in case somebody challenges and says, by the way, I know they're always taking gifts from the, from the hardware store and I think it exceeds fifty dollars. Well, the hardware store may not be keeping records. So you need to keep your records. Single source means just that, one, one source of gifts. You might be able to receive gifts from ten different sources up to fifty dollars. A good practice that most city council members will choose to do is to not accept gifts from anyone that has a legislative or administrative interest. Legislative interest is someone who is also seeking something from the city officially. What's a gift? It's something of economic value that's given to the public official or their relative. So okay, if the gifts are not given directly to you, but they're given to you, one of those relatives, including your, your brother-in-law, who might live in the other side of town. If something's given to that person and there's without payment or other consideration of equivalent value that is not otherwise available to other people, that's considered a gift and needs to be tracked. The little special offer, this was, again, this is Sean's work. I think Sean did this because he knew it'd get me started. When I first started giving ethics training years ago, there were these special offers that were being given to public safety officers, firefighters, to buy computers at a low rate or to get cellphone service at a low rate. Back in the day, those were ethical violations and many people were brought up on at least complaints. But now there, most of these offers, when you look behind the fine print, they're really open to almost everybody. That if you bring the offer forward and say, well, I'm not really a such and such, but I'd like this offer. Usually a company might say, oh, we have that available for everybody. That was just a promo. But when it is specific to just someone who's a public official, you need to be concerned about that. If it is excluded to just public officials, you should not be able to get something that a member of the public can't get. Whether it's a special officer offer or otherwise. Who's it from? Who's the source of the gift? The source of the gift is ultimately the person who pays the expense. So if someone brings you a gift and says, this was, an admirer of yours wants you to have this gift. Well, that might be a problem because the person who provided and paid for the gift might be somebody that has a legislative administrative interest. They might be looking for a contract from the city. They might be looking for a land use approval from the city, but they may have already received one or both of those. So you need to be aware of where the gift came from. So you may, you may need to ask some questions. And the questions are, is there a legislative administrative interest? Is there a decision or vote that you might take that benefits that person who's going to give the gift? What to do with prohibited gifts? First of all, if you're careful, really careful, you might not want to receive any of them. But if you do, then you need to, and you get a gift that's inappropriate. It's over twenty-five, over fifty dollars. You should do one of the following things. You can dispose of it by giving it to the city for the city's use. But for instance, I've known of people who have won this wonderful computer at a trade show that they brought back to the city and they found out that that was a gift. They wouldn't have been at the trade show, but for the fact that they're a public official, therefore this thousand dollar win really isn't a thousand dollar win. They want to give it to the city and the city's IT director says, I can't use that. That's not compatible. And what should we do? Best thing is to make a record of it, maybe give it to a nonprofit that could use that piece of equipment and get a receipt for it because you want to make a record that you disposed of the gift. And this is all because you never know who out there in the community might get upset and want to challenge you. They might see an action that they don't like. They may be the person who provided the gift and guess what? They expected something returned, they didn't get something returned. Next thing you know, they file a complaint with the Ethics Commission. Yes, I'm allowable gifts. We're always happy to see this. You can accept gifts from relatives. That's always a great thing. And there's tokens of appreciation for, that have a value of no less than twenty-five dollars and a few other things. So we're going to move along a little quickly. Food and beverage exclusion. Bottom line is the bottom statement here. You cannot accept private meals from somebody that has an administrative or legislative interest. You can take part in meals that are at a reception or another meeting that you're attending representing the government. Best practice, if you're unclear about this and want some, some more protection, see if the city council can designate you to be the person that represents the organization at such and such meeting at the coast or in downtown Portland or wherever where there's going to be a meal served. Statements of economic interest, each and every one of you, members of council, planning commission, and city manager are all required to file a statement of economic interest on, by April fifteenth. It's easier to do now. It can be done online. It's a, about a six-page form to fill out that you're required to state what your sources of income are. Also what gifts you've received in the prior calendar year. So because you're going to be in office on April fifteenth, you're going to be asked what gifts you received from anybody with legislative administrative interest before the city council that you might have received this year. Ideally, that's none, but again, be careful these next couple of months. There's some training online that the Ethics Commission has that helps you. I want to make a plug for the Ethics Commission's Public Officials Guide that is online. You can find that at the Ethics Commission's website. It's very, it is very, very informative. It has a lot of what ifs, you know, answer most of your questions. So what happens if you're facing an ethics issue now? If something comes up that you think you may have a conflict of interest or some other ethical concern, your best course of action, before you do anything that puts you in harm's way, is to contact the Ethics Commission and ask the Ethics Commission. Their staff is usually reachable. They'll give you an over the, over the phone explanation of whether something is a problem or not. And they may give you a course of action to follow. If you relay the set of facts to the Ethics Commission, you need to give them a complete set of facts because there's something else that you left out. And then the Ethics Commission staff says, well, based on what you told me, you, you're okay. If you then left something out and then go and do something and that thing you left out is a critical element, you could be brought up on charges. So my recommendation is always seek permission. Don't go after the fact and say, this is what I did. Is this a problem? Because then you've disclosed that you've got a problem and you in fact could be sanctioned. You should, you need to respect the law, the legislative institute, institution. Seeking legal advice is great, but your city attorney cannot insulate you by you seeking the city attorney's advice as to whether or not something is an ethical issue for you. The statute does not provide you that protection. There's three levels of advice that you can get. The first and the easiest to get is that phone call to the staff. Second is to request it in writing with a formal staff opinion. If you're going to get a formal opinion, you're going to put in writing what your issue is. And then the, the highest level is commission opinion. Usually this is a very, an issue of new impression for the commission and they may do some analysis and they'll, they'll make the decision. That could take up to six months. So if it's something that you think is a problem and the commission says, well, let us do a commission opinion, it's probably something that you should stay away from. Most important, meet your own standards. Be aware of appearances because again, the entire community might be watching you and see something that they may consider to be a problem. Someone can file a complaint to the Ethics Commission and the Ethics Commission, once they get that complaint, if it's put in writing, they will follow through, they'll contact you and say, you need to give us some information. This is a complaint that's been filed. They may not tell you who filed it, but they'll tell you this is the issue. And you need to be prepared to defend your decision, any decision you make. I like to add this line because your CIS insurance probably has coverage for you as an individual member of council up to seventy-five hundred dollars for an ethics complaint. That's because CIS wants to protect the integrity of your organization. CIS will provide that insurance only if you contact them as soon as the complaint's filed. They get to assign the attorney and that you prevail, that it's found that you did not violate a section of the statute. And then there's this, this clause here is about the trust fund. Remember I mentioned that earlier. Strangely enough, there's a provision in the statute that says that if you have to defend yourself, other people can give you money. So before there was a gift limit of fifty dollars. But under this, other people can give you sums above fifty dollars to defend yourself against an ethics complaint. That's all I can say about that. I, I haven't dealt with one. I, I, I'm not sure that I totally agree with that whole process, but. Sanctions, you can be given a civil penalty up to five thousand dollars for something that you violated. Typically though, there'll be a letter of reprimand or an explanation if you have violated something. It may be that you've done it somewhat innocently, but the process itself is enough punishment to have the public become aware that an ethics complaint has been submitted against you is enough punishment as an elected official. Now, these are confidential when they're lobbed into the Ethics Commission. The Ethics Commission can't say that there's been an ethics complaint against you, but the person that filed the complaint certainly can tell the press that I filed a complaint against so-and-so. And then you have to live the period of time between then and, uh, it's not worth it. And you can be forfeit twice the amount of any financial benefit. So for instance, if a public works director always buys vehicles from the local Ford dealership, always gets a great government deal and then goes in to buy a Ford for their son or daughter and the dealer says, I know you, you, you brought us so much business, I want to give you the special government rate. If the employee takes that special government rate and gets brought up on charges, that amount that they saved would be doubled as the amount of their financial penalty. So needless to say, you cannot take advantage of those deals. Let's talk about the last three issues, public meetings, public records, and liability. Public meetings, the Oregon, Oregon public meeting law, we've already talked about to some extent. The intent is to assure that meetings are open to the public so the public will know what the activities are and the decisions made by public officials. Four requirements. There has to be a public notice of the public meeting. You have to hold the meeting in the public body's jurisdiction or a meeting like this because it's two councils together in one of the communities or a most convenient. Have to hold the meeting in an accessible location. And they have to be meetings prepared, meeting minutes prepared. Those are the four elements of the public meeting law. A meeting is a convening of any quorum of the governing body for the purpose of deliberating towards a decision or to gather information. The votes have to be recorded in the public record. There's no secret ballots. We mentioned the TriMet case, but it's really the handy case from, uh, handy case, I'm not sure which county it was.
Lane County.
Lane County, thank you, Mayor. The handy case, which was a serial meeting case. Serial meetings have to be avoided. This is a uncertain, unsettled area of the law. But the thing is, in the handy case, there was going to be a decision that was coming forward. I think it had to do with collective bargaining or something like that. And a member of council contacted another member of council, this is what I'm thinking, what do you think? Then that person contacted another member of council, what are you thinking? This is what Joe thinks and this is what I think. And next thing you know, they've talked to majority of the members of the council before going into a meeting to make a decision. As a result, the decision was predetermined. And under the Oregon Public Meeting Law, council members cannot do that. They can only be talking about deliberating towards making a decision if it's in the public view. So serial meetings must be avoided. And there's some controversy as to how this is to be interpreted, but the League of Oregon Cities and people like me are saying, be very careful, don't let it happen. Some settings are not considered meetings. When there's more than one council member present, but less than a majority, it's not a meeting. If there's less, I'd rather, less than a quorum. If there's less than a quorum, meeting to discussion, an issue typically it's not a meeting, but it could lead to a serial meeting. So you need to be concerned about that. If two of you on a five-member council get together and have a very long and have a very long discussion and you're reaching a decision where you're going to go and then you talk to a third member, that's a serial meeting. If a Quorum meets for a reason other than deliberation on a decision like a social gathering, that's not a public meeting, but it can become a public meeting. If you're all at a holiday party together or major or Quorum of you are and you huddle together and say, so this item is coming up next week. What are you thinking? And if you all share that information, that could be a violation. And by the way, the public doesn't like to see that. And it's probably something that could lead to a complaint filed against you and against the city. If a Quorum meets for a reason other than deliberation on an issue, then engages in the discussion, the meeting becomes a public meeting. So that meeting at the punch bowl at the holiday party could all of a sudden become a public meeting, but you didn't give notice of it. And that becomes a problem. Public notice. Law requires that the public notice tells public when, where the meeting is going to be, what time it's going to be. Also, it needs to give some reasonable notice to the news media. So you've probably got a newspaper of public record. You may have other news media like a radio or a blogger who have said, I want to know whenever the council's meeting, would you please provide me with notice? You have to have a notice that is sent to them that gives them some actual notice reasonably calculated to give actual notice. Which means if they say they'll accept it by email and you have an emergency meeting, you can send them that email as soon as you know you're going to have the emergency meeting and then hold it. We'll talk a little bit later about types of meetings. Notice has to include a list of the principal subjects that are anticipated to be at the meeting. But that doesn't mean you can't add something to the agenda. But if you know something is going to be talked about, you'd need to put it onto the agenda. Public votes. All official actions have to be taken by a public vote, an open vote. The results have to be recorded in the minutes. So your city recorder is always going to want to know how each and every one of you voted. Now, it can say unanimous. And if the meetings also, meeting minutes say these five people were present and there's seven members of council, but those five are present. Then when you say unanimous, we know who it means. But if there's somebody who didn't vote or somebody abstained, it needs to say specifically who that person was. Verbatim transcripts are not required. Minutes though have to reflect the matters that are discussed. It used to be that we said they need, they can be topical notes. Well, they really need to be more than topical notes. They have to have the actions taken, the, the things that are talked about, any votes that are taken, any materials that are discussed all have to be within the meeting minutes. They have to be available to the public in a reasonable time after the meeting. Even if they aren't adopted. Now, the Secretary of State has determined that a reasonable time is 21 days. If you're going beyond 21 days to get the meeting minutes into a reasonable fashion to be able to make available for someone to review, then you've probably got a problem. You need to justify that by the work demands or something else. Minutes have to be permanently maintained, retained. And there are also minutes for executive sessions. They have to be minutes, but they're not public records. Written minutes have to include the following. The members present, the actions or resolutions, as I said, any results of a vote taken, the substance of any discussion and reference to any documents in the meeting. Your city recorder knows that and is very proficient at it, I'm sure. There are various types of meetings that are held. Your city charter will define when and how often a city council must hold a regular meeting. It may say you only have to meet once a month, but you might by tradition always meet twice a month or four times a month. You can hold additional meetings as long as you have proper notice and minutes. I once worked with a city that didn't understand that they could have work sessions before regular council meetings. You can do it as long as you provide proper notice. The types of meetings might be other than regular meetings, work sessions. Where you're just meeting as a, as a council. Maybe talking about some new initiatives or maybe talking about the progress made on some project, but you're not going to make a decision. You might have a study session where you go into greater detail about something that you're working on, studying something. You may invite some other local government in for that conversation, the county or the school district, whatever. You can also have special meetings. Special meetings can be held as long as you give at least 24 hours notice. Do we need to have a special meeting for some purpose? And you have to follow the required notification to the media and others. You can also have emergency meetings. Those can be less than 24 hours notice, but an effort needs to be made to provide notice to the members of council as well as the media as well as anybody else that might have requested that they be given notice of all meetings. And you can have executive sessions. We'll talk a bit about executive sessions. So there's different formats for each one. Executive sessions are the ones that the state regulates the most. Other rules that apply to public meetings, you have to make sure that they're in a place that is suitable to accommodate the public's attendance. That doesn't mean that you always have to meet at a, in an auditorium. You may have a situation you didn't anticipate the city council chambers was going to be overflowing. If you do have an overflowing city council chambers, you should try to make some effort to make sure that everybody does have a chance to hear or participate. Already talked about holding them within the geographic boundaries. They typically take place at a public meeting. Oh, public meetings can take place at private places with adequate notice. You can decide that you're going to meet at a private resident, maybe even in your own home. Or at another place within the community with proper notice. You can do that as long as that location does not discriminate against any individuals. It can't be a place that is known to discriminate against people because of their gender or their physical disability or whatever. And they have to be places that meet ADA. Public attendance. I said this before. Public attendance is allowed at all meetings, but not necessarily participation. The participation can be disallowed on all but three defined elements. Employment of a public officer, determination of standards to be used for hiring the chief executive officer and determination of standards to be used in evaluating the employment of chief executive officer. What this means is you have city managers. You're going to probably be doing a performance review of your city manager each and every year. It's valuable to put on or it's required that the public know what you're going to be evaluating the manager on. So what you might do, I've seen some cities put on their January agenda. These are the criteria that we evaluate city manager and take public input. Somebody might say, well, I think something is missing. They should be, you should be concerned about this. Take that public input. Maybe make a modification and move forward. Control of meetings. I mentioned it before, the presiding officer has inherent authority to keep order. The public should have access to the rules in advance. They should know whether they're coming into a meeting that they're only going to be allowed three minutes to speak and whether or not they need to step forward to a podium as opposed to make comments from from the seats. We always want to have people come forward to the microphone to be able to record them so that it's an accurate record of the meeting. The council can impose restrictions, time, manner and place. Council can say, we are going to restrict public comments to no more than X number of meeting minutes. If you're going to do that, make sure you use that same standard for the person who you love to hear from as well as the person that you'd rather not hear from. Make sure you apply the same standard. Council adopted rules can dictate the time during a meeting. The comments can be made. We, we can decide when to not allow public input. There might be some elements you don't, elements of an agenda you don't do. You can establish when that takes place in the meeting and you can limit the input to certain topics within limits, within reason. Again, land use you can't. And you can establish and regulate times for input. Disultely conduct, conduct. If someone, excuse me, if someone is disruptive, you have the ability to take action. However, freedom of speech. Freedom of speech is being interpreted in public meetings so that someone can go to pretty extreme measures before they're declared out of order and disruptive and required to leave. Where I say caution, caution to remove a disruptive person. Actual disruption of the council's ability to conduct the meeting has to occur. So it has to be the council cannot conduct the meeting. If someone just decides to be in the back of the room and be swearing under their breath on a regular basis, if that's not stopping the council's ability to conduct the meeting, then you really can't do anything about that individual. It's important also to know that if you are going to decide to remove someone because of the disruptive behavior, call your public safety officers. They know how to do it. They know how to make the determination and they know the law rather than you create your exposure. So who should act? Cities should take great caution when taking action to suspended disruptive person. Excuse me, you can't prospectively exclude someone. You can't say you can never come back to the city council meeting. This person might learn from the experience. So we can't preemptively say that someone can't participate. There may be an exception if a person's made threats to public safety. But if they make threats to public safety, there's a reason for you to can contact the police department and have them make the determination whether or not there should be something done. And what you, you may do is you might get a restraining order of some sort. Maybe that's possible. But law enforcement's trained and experienced and they have authority to act. Executive sessions. You can meet an executive session, but only on certain criteria. Certain exceptions. The civil penalties that the city council as a whole, individuals, rather, city, city council members as individuals could have assessed to them by the Oregon Government Ethics Commission. If you seek advice from your city attorney, whether or not you can call an executive session on a particular item and the city attorney says you can hold it for this particular purpose, you've received some insulation from charges against you. Your city attorney should know the law and should give you proper advice. So that provides you with protection. Supposed to know you cannot take a final action in an executive session. All you can do is give direction to say your negotiator on a property transaction, negotiator for collective bargaining. You may get some consensus of, well, it sounds like we're interested in doing this, but do not take a vote. You cannot take a vote. You cannot take a final action. You have to always come into a regular session of council, either that same day or another adequately noticed time to take that final action. And it's important to be properly noticed. If for instance, you're in a meeting and your last item on the agenda is to go into executive session. And you go into executive session and you say, we're, the council is going to be done at the end of this executive session. There's no need to hang around. We're not making a decision tonight. You can't change your mind in executive session and come back and reconvene the meeting to take action on the item you're, you want to talk about. You need to preserve the, your right to do that. It's always valuable too, that when you go into an executive session at the end of a council meeting, that you give the public some reasonable estimate of how much time you're going to be in executive session because they might choose to stick around. Here's some of the permissible purposes. To discuss employment of public offices, talk about discipline of public officers. To do, discuss labor negotiations, exempt records, real estate transactions, public investments. But these are all specified within the rules that apply to public meetings and executive sessions. Very specific. The rules. They may be planned in advance and noted on an agenda. That's the best way. You need to state the reason you're going into executive session. We're going into executive session under the provisions of ORS 192662 whatever. The whatever is the element, the A through H R beyond of what the specific issue is that you're going to talk about. And then you can only talk about those items. You can have more than one item, but you need to specify all of the items you might talk about in executive session. You can't stray from that. If you stray from it and start talking about something other than what you went into executive session for, basically you've lost all the rights to the executive session. Everything that you said in the executive session becomes open for public dissemination. U S council members are bound to confidentiality. You are bound to confidentiality for anything talked about in executive session. You can't talk about it when you go home and talk to your spouse. You can't talk about it until it becomes something that's talked about publicly. And then all of the things that are talked about publicly are open for discussion. If you violate that, you break down the integrity of your relationship with the rest of the council, you may create some liability for the city. And you've created your own personal liability. For instance, if you're talking about whether or not the city wants to buy this piece of property and you only want to authorize $100,000 for that property, you want to buy it for 100,000, but you give your negotiator up to $200,000 to negotiate with. If you come out and someone says, well, what are you going to offer? Well, we're going to go up to $200,000. Well, if that gets back to the seller, obviously the seller is going to expect the 100, the 200,000. You've just created a $100,000 exposure to the city. So you can have a meeting that's called just for an executive session. It doesn't have to be associated with your regular meeting. If you come out of executive session, you can't go back into a regular session again to take action unless you've informed the public. The media cannot be excluded from an executive session. And this is a controversial issue. What is media? Media used to be the local newspaper. Could be the radio station. Now it could be a blogger. You may or may not have your own rules that define what is media. But the movement at the legislative level seems to be more towards transparency. If somebody reasonably is seen as someone who is commonly reporting on the activities of local government, they're doing it for the benefit of the public, not for their own individual benefit. They may qualify as a member of the meeting. Be careful about that. Your council probably already has some direction on that. An executive session is closed to certain people, but the council can invite staff and others to attend. You always have the right to invite somebody into the executive session. However, if you invite somebody into the executive session, they're bound by confidentiality. And you don't really have much in the way of control over them to sanction them if they violate it. Enforcement of public meetings law. There can be litigation brought by a person against the city for violations of public meeting law. A decision that you make that violates the public meeting law can sometimes be ratified at a later meeting. So sometimes you're able to fix a violation by having another action. Sometimes that's awkward. Normally courts won't void a decision that's made at an improper meeting without a finding of intentional conduct. But again, you violated the trust of the community potentially. Ethics Commission will consider complaints against individuals for violation of executive session laws. Public records. Go through this real quick. Number one, purpose is to retain for history and inspection any public records. And the idea is the government operates in the sunshine, open to the viewing of the public. Public record is anything that's used or prepared by a public official. If we were in a meeting today that you were members of city council, the notes that you're making on those handouts would be a public record. That's the interpretation League of Oregon Cities gave it a essential elected essentials training that I went to a few years ago, and I think they're right. If you're a member of the city council, because it's part of your activity as a member of council. So anything that's used or prepared by a public official, they, it has to be retained in accordance with a record retention. So all you'd have to do is you'd have to make sure that at some point in time to give it to the city recorder. So the city recorder can put into the proper record retention schedule and maintain it in some files. So it's available. Records are public records that no person to use unlawful destruction. Oh. The, the important thing here is you cannot destroy something that is a public record. Now you get a council packet every week. When you get that council packet, if you haven't put any notes on it, you can throw it away. Because somebody else, namely the city already has a copy of that in the public record. But if you're marking it up, putting your, your notes, what's important to you, what you might, how you might vote theoretically and legally, that is a public record. When you leave office, you probably should turn, transfer all those records. I know the city recorders hate me when I say this. Because you might have, oh, actually they, they do appreciate it because it's so hard sometimes to get them from some people when they leave office. But you can bring those big backpack boxes in, dump them and now, you know, have, have room in your garage again. Disclosure. A public record is anything that's used by a member of the public that's subject to inspection, which means somebody can make a request to take a look at it. Your city recorder is very proficient in handling public records requests as a process. Typically someone will make a request on a form. You should always ask someone to fill out a form for a public record. So you know exactly what they're asking for. You may decide that you can turn that around and give it to them immediately because you have a, a copy hanging around. Or you may have to do some research. You have five days in which to say whether or not you're going to be able to give that to them. And then you have another 10 days to obtain it. And you can charge them for it. But if you're going to charge it, you need to have the, the charge established in advance. And typically it's 25 cents per page for copying. It may involve the cost of producing the records and it may involve. And typically it's 25 cents per page for copying. It may involve the cost of producing the records and it may involve looking at materials and redacting some information that is not reachable by the public. Request that documents be created and not public records requests. People can't ask you, oh, by the way, I know you've got 15 different reports. Can you put it into one summary and that's the one I want to buy? No. You don't, you don't have to do that. You can give them the raw materials. Records need not have been originally prepared by the public body. You might get something from a local engineering firm. Because they're doing work for you. That's public record. Emails, everything is a public record that comes in electronically. Voicemail messages are a public record as long as you maintain them. There's no requirement that you retain voicemail messages. But if you do retain them and someone asks for it, it's public record. Bunch of exemptions, things that you would look at and say, well, it makes sense. We need to be able to review real estate appraisals and not let somebody know what we think the value of their property is. We shouldn't have criminal investigations while they're ongoing. Be available to the public. Library records of an individual shouldn't be available. Law enforcement, public safety plans. We shouldn't make those available because that tears down the integrity of the plan if everybody knows about it. Should note though, that if there's litigation against the city, once the city, once the litigation is concluded, the litigation records now are available. There's a 25 year exceptions too. I should note that the Secretary of State also has a secretary, Secretary of State's office has an archivist. The archivist's responsibility is to tell you how long you need to keep certain records. Minutes have to be kept forever. But other things, the archivists have said five years, 10 years, whatever. You can decide to keep things longer, but it's sometimes a bad practice to hold on to something longer than you're required to because it could come back and bite you. Council liability and exposure. I know this is important, all of it. The Oregon Tort Claim Act has been established to determine what the limitations are on actions against a local government. Cities are subject to claims for any tort that, that is alleged to occur. And a tort is a wrong caused by a breach of a duty owed resulting in an injury or property damage. So it's not a criminal act. It's a civil action. The Oregon Tort Claim Act is an ORS 3260 to 300, and it talks about civil liability. It provides for defense and indemnity. You are indemnified as a member of the city council as long as you stay within your area. You're performing as a member of the city council. Remember I said before, decisions are made by you as a city council. You're not making individual decisions to get involved in a personnel action. Or to tell somebody they're going to get a contract to the city, or I promise you that there'll be a land use action approved by, for you. As long as you stay within your lane and operate as a member of the city council, you're covered. Cities are liable for the torts of their offices, which means the city will provide you with coverage. They'll also provide it for employees and volunteers. But it does not include contractual or criminal liability. So if you do some criminal action, there's no coverage whatsoever. Even if it's done during the time that you're serving as a council member in, at a council meeting, whatever. The Tort Claim Act provides some specific language. If somebody feels that they've been damaged, they have responsibility to let the city know that they've been damaged. They have to provide a notice of tort claim within six months, 180 days of the action. Now, some people will tell you right away, my car hit a pothole, my front rear was damp, my wheel was damaged. It happened two days ago. I want the city to pay for my front tire to be repaired because you should have fixed the pothole. They don't have to wait six months. When there's a notice of tort claim, what the city does is it contacts its insurance carrier in the, in the issue of the the damaged rim. Obviously you're not going to do that. You might take it out of petty cash or you might have some, some source of funds. The notice of claim though, this is important for you because the way that the statute reads that there's an actual notice and there's a formal notice. A formal notice is a written claim that's delivered by mail or personal delivery, which means handed to you. That's given to the public body's administrative office. They go to city manager or the city attorney. Or they give it to a member of the governing body. That's, that's formal notice of a tort claim. What if you get that at the end of a council meeting? You're, you're frazzled. You've been up to, you've been at this meeting until 11:30. And a member of the public comes up to you as you're talking to somebody in the parking lot and says, here, I want you to have this. This is a notice of claim. And yeah, thanks. And you stick it in your pocket. You have basically, it's the old, you've been served, but you've been served on behalf of the city. That could be a proper notification and the city could have some responsibility. There's also actual notice. The prime thing I want to tell you here is don't accept any notices of tort claim. Make sure they are directed to the administrative offices. Because otherwise you, you could encumber the city, take responsibility for something. And when there's a notice of tort claim, the first thing the city is going to do is the city is going to do an investigation and assemble all the materials for its defense. There's a statute of limitations and immunity. A lawsuit has to be filed within two years after the alleged, excuse me, the alleged loss or injury. So when that notice of tort claim is filed within six months, within two years from the alleged issue, there needs to be a lawsuit filed. It's possible somebody files a notice of tort claim and never does anything to it. They go to a lawyer and the lawyer says, this is what it's going to cost you or this is your chance of success and they never do anything. If that's the case, after two years it expires. Immunity. Cities and their offices, employees, et cetera are immune from liability for these things. Work as comp, claims about taxes and failure to perform a discretionary function. That's the one that's most important to you. If you as a council are making a discretionary decision, for instance, you have to make a decision how to allocate the five million dollars that you have for road improvements this year. But you've got 30 million dollars worth of roads. And you go through a process and identify which five, which roads are going to be, be fixed. And then there's damage to an intersection on one of the other ones. And somebody says, you should have fixed that one. You, you knew because it was on your list of projects. You knew it was a problem. The city may have immunity because you went through a process and had to make a tough choice. You only had certain resources to allocate and you made the one as a council that you chose to do. You've got immunity from somebody's claim that the injury only would have happened, only happened because you failed to fix their road. Indemnity means that the city officials will be indemnified or covered by the city for any tort claim, whether it's groundless or not. Because obviously even a groundless complaint, we're going to go through a process and incur costs. Indemnity is not required though, if you have malfeasance or wanton, willful neglect of duties. So there are some standards. Don't do really, really bad things. If you do, you are going to be on the hook yourself to defend yourself. The city is not going to indemnify you if you perform malfeasance. The defense, if it arose out of your official duties, the city will provide coverage through your, the insurance company. And normally a lawsuit names an official or employee. They might name you individually. Well, that doesn't, that doesn't feel very good. But it's possible if it's named, if, if you're named as five individuals, it'd be immediately changed to it's against the city of independence or Monmouth rather than individual. This last slide that I want to show you is limitations on damages. You should know that the Oregon Tort Claims Act used to have a very low threshold for the maximum amount that a person could recover for damage. So for instance, someone could have been killed and the maximum amount of money that they could obtain would be say $200,000 up till several years ago. The dates I have in here, the, the date, the amounts of potential recovery established by statute. And up until 1989, it hadn't been changed in a number of years. And then in 2009, by Senate Bill 311, finally, the legislature changed the amount of the maximum award because you know what was happening? Places like OHSU and others that had doctors that were committing serious loss of life, a loss of limb to patients. People who were challenging under the Oregon Tort Claim Act had a limitation of what the recoveries were. The legislature recognized that's not right. So they now split it. So health issues are one thing. Local government issues are higher. You should be aware of this because it increases what your insurance premiums are. But now the personal injury and death limit is now up to $769,000 per claimant. Before July 1, 2009, it was only $200,000 for an individual. And there's a CPI escalator that's built in that every year, January 1, that's changed. I'm sorry, July 1. And property damage is still quite low. No punitive damages can be assessed against the city. What to do if you're sued? Immediately provide the documents to the city attorney, insurance agent and insurer. And of course, the city manager will receive a copy. They'll gather all the related documentation. Don't discuss it publicly. Executive sessions can be held so you can have conversations with your attorney about threatened litigation and preserve the attorney client privilege. Don't talk about the litigation, what you're receiving as advice from your attorneys. Two hours and five minutes. We're only a little bit over. Well, we only had the one question, but it was a great question. I appreciate it. So now I'm going to say, are there any questions that we have from folks or will be, oh, we do. Nope. Otherwise what we'll do is on Saturday. Carol has a question. Okay, Carol?
Yeah, sorry. This is back in the ethics section and I'm going to try to remember. You said that nobody can buy you dinner if it's over, over $50 or something. But we have a really small town and you could be like going over to somebody's house for dinner. It turns out that there's a, it could be a potential conflict of interest. Does, does that count going to somebody's house for dinner is so, or?
Great question. It depends on why you went over to the person's house. Did you go over because it's an annual holiday party and everybody in the neighborhood is invited? Or you've historically gone to that person's house and you just go over as part of the holiday spirit? Or were you invited over specifically by the individual who has an administrative or legislative intent? So you need to be thinking, why is this happening? Is it potentially going to put me in a situation that it is a gift? And does the person have an interest that I should be concerned about? So if the person hasn't made an application, say for a land use action or a contract with the city. But sometime after the event, they actually do make application. That's probably all right if it's factually that nothing was talked about, about their interest. But if you're at the party and the person says, yeah, I've been really meaning to talk to you because, you know, I don't like the fact that the city only has one towing company that gets its, all of its business. I want to apply and I'm so glad you're going to be on the city council so you can understand what quality service I have. So it's factual.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
I agree with Carol. I'm scared to have anybody pay for my dinner enough.
Yeah, it's, it's a good practice to, to be concerned. Yeah.
If I can offer, we, we have a policy and I learned it from some state legislators. We don't take anything from anybody at any time. It just makes it really clean. And sometimes it's very difficult because people want to be just kind. They're just, just you guys are doing great stuff and let me buy you a beer. We have to say, no, we, we can't. And it's just the rules. And that's what you just have to say is if you sit, at least that's what we do. We don't take anything from anyone. And, and sometimes you have, you know, somebody want, my son was years ago, well, you know, some shoes. You know, there's some new neat, great athletic shoes. No, we can't, can't take those. Nobody was trying to do anything bad. They just knew that he was an athletic type kid.
Yep, it's, that's, that's great advice. And you're personally liable. You're the person who's accountable for whatever happens. And it's always about appearances. So you might do something innocently. You don't think it's a problem. But next thing you know, someone brings it up. The, the example I always used to use in training about ethics was you, you go in to buy a lawnmower. The person before you just bought a lawnmower. You appear, you buy the lawnmower and the person says, I've got a special deal for you. But there really wasn't any discussion as to why it's a special deal. The special deal was they just got a notification that Black &amp; Decker is giving $50 off as of today. And the person gives $50 off, but somebody is walking out the door paying full price for something just like that. And they hear the transaction and they know you're a city council member. They just assume, because they watch all the TV programs. They just assume that there's something going on and they file a complaint. Then you have to retrace the steps. What if you go back to the person who sold you the lawnmower and they say, well, yeah, I gave it to you because you're a city council member. Because now they're mad at you because in the interim, they didn't get the deal to, to sell five lawnmowers to the public works department. They don't support you. Anyway, best practice, don't take any deals. Yes, John.
So I just wanted to sort of raise the issue of email retention. If somebody in city hall drops an email to a counselor, it's been preserved because it came out of city council's computer or, or city hall's computers. And presumably they're going to maintain all those email records. But when somebody who knows you in town emails you on a council business and they have your email address and they email you directly, you have a responsibility to maintain that email, question mark. And would it be appropriate to forward that email to the city recorder so that now it's in the city's system? And you don't have to worry about it quite so much?
I, I, I can take that one mostly because I have three public emails. I'm the mayor. I'm the director of finance and operations for the school district and I'm on the board of trustees of the university. And people send me emails to the wrong account all the time. And so what I usually do is forward it, whether it's personal or one of the wrong publics. And I put in the subject line, not for records retention purposes for X. And if they mailed it to the school district and it should have been city business, I put not for public records retention for the school district. And then forwarded on to my city email. So yeah, it is people, you know, they don't think or they've known you for years and they send it to your personal. And I would definitely always forward it as quickly as possible and make sure all of the replies then come from your city email.
Yeah, that's great advice. And yes, they, they are public records. They've come to you as a, the purpose is they send it to you as a member of the city council. Even if it comes in your private email, that is a public record. You either need to retain it and have a, have a process that you're going to retain it and be able to turn it over to the city recorder at some time. Or forward it on to the, to the, to the city recorder. Emails are very difficult and it's always important, if possible, to seg, segregate your public business from yours, your personal account. If you are using your own laptop and are getting information from the city as well as your personal stuff. If there's litigation against the city and the attorney makes a request for any and all records related to any activities by members of the city council between the period of July 1 and December 31, your computer could be taken out of your hands so that it can be mined to obtain all the information. And you might also have a lot of information that you didn't want to have made public get into the hands of someone. So if at all possible, segment them. Yes, Mayor. Jake, the mayor had a question?
I, I have a question. I don't know about the mayor. This is Carol McKeel.
Hi Carol, sorry.
Oh, okay.
I elevated you. You didn't like the
No, it really scared me. The seats can have that. It's so looking at personal computers, I was, because I use computers. I've been taking notes here all day. Well, for the two hours. If you use your computer, but you send your notes to the, the cloud or onto a flash drive, can that, can you say, I don't use my, I don't store this information on my computer or is that too bad?
Well, the IT expert in the room will probably tell us that even though you sent it to the cloud, you really didn't get it off your computer. It's in there somewhere. And in a discovery, it probably can be found. So I think you still have the same issue. Please confirm that.
And then Bill, one other one. I have always found it odd that spouses of siblings qualify for the ethics concerns, but siblings of spouses don't. Because my sibling is married to former governor Kulin Gaski, and so I had to report him on my ethics forums. But he didn't have to report me on his. And if you think about who's more And if you think about who's more likely to have engaged in trying to influence the other elected official, I don't think Ted was going to try to get me to do anything for the state. I never, I made a point of never asking him to do anything for Monmouth while I was mayor, but I've always found that to be a really odd twist in the ethics law and one of those loopholes that probably ought to get plugged. And I have spoken to a couple of legislatures, but it's still yawning, from what you said today, a yawning gap.
It is. I agree. And it, and as you know, when that, when that change was made, there was quite a bit of controversy as to those individuals that were added and those that were not. And in fact, we all know that the legislature makes laws, and usually there's some lobbying that goes on and some exemptions that are made for reasons that may not be totally known to us, but they have their reasons. Thank you. Was that it for today? We'll come back again on two o'clock on Saturday, and we'll go through land use, and there'll be quite a bit about due process, and we'll go through more about conflict of interest and bias. And that'll be a chance for you to ask specific questions about that. So thanks a lot for participating today. I look forward to seeing you again on Saturday.
Thank you.
Thank you.